Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five New Bern Board of Alderman meeting. The prayer tonight will be coordinated by Alderman Best.
Thank you, Mayor. I usually deliver my prayers at board meetings, but tonight I see Elder Mark Best out in the audience. So will you please come up and give us prayer?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Alderman Best. Mayor Alderman, City Administration and staff, citizens of New Bern and Craven County, good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
Let us bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we come before you in the precious name of your son, Jesus, knowing that he shed blood on Calvary's cross for us to have a right to the tree of life. We ask for the presence of your Holy Spirit to be here this evening as we come together for the good of the citizens of New Bern. As things are said, comments are made, we ask that no hatred, no ambiguity, that nothing will keep us from still being your children, that we will show love and compassion to each other, and even if we disagree, that we can leave disagreement inside and still be friends as you asked us to be. Let us continue to strive to be brothers and sisters in Christ because we are all your children, and may you be merciful to us as we come together on behalf of those who are not here and the citizens of New Bern who are need. Let us be like you. You came here to show compassion for your fellow man and to meet the needs of the people. So as the city prepares to meet the needs of the citizens of New Bern, may you be gracious and kind, and may your Holy Spirit guide the thoughts of everyone here. Be praying as these things in your son, Jesus, most holy and precious name. Amen.
Amen.
If you're able to stand, please do so, and pledge allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, if you would, please call the roll.
Alderman Prill?
Here.
Alderman Royal?
Here.
Alderman Astor?
Here.
Mayor Odom?
Here.
Alderman Kinsey?
Here.
Alderman Best?
Present.
Okay, Board, what's the pleasure of the Board on item number three to approve the agenda?
Mayor, I would like to make a motion to move item number twenty-two to be first on the agenda. I'm asking that because tonight there are Ward Six citizens in the courtroom who have waited for over a year to have their ward represented, and I say tonight, not only do they have a right to be represented, but they deserve representation. They have voiced, by their vote, that they want to be represented by Mr. Dana Outlaw, and I would hope that this board will unanimously agree.
Second. Okay, have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Move it. Item number twenty-two to the next item on the agenda. Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion?
If I could just foster for just a quick verification, you have received from the Board of Elections the certification of the election.
That's correct. I received that this afternoon.
And given the motion that's on the floor, I assume that Mr. Outlaw was certified as the winner for the Ward Six election.
He was.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now we will do appointments. Item number twenty-two.
Mayor Odom, I would like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Dana Outlaw as the Alderman for Ward Six. Let me see if I'm saying that right. For Ward Six to fill that vacancy, thank you, until the new board is seated.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Do you prefer a roll call?
Let's do roll call, yes.
Okay, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Prill.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries. Is Mr. Outlaw here?
He's on the way.
Okay. Are there other appointments, since we're now doing item number twenty-two? He's not on there anymore. It's already been filled. I have an appointment to the HPC to fill the seat for Trip Yor, and I would like to appoint Elena Huber. Second. Okay, have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion?
Were we circulated the applications?
Yes, ma'am.
We were. I did not get a chance to, I guess, review it. I didn't see it. Could you give me a moment just to look at it?
Sure. It's on the email.
And Mayor, while we're waiting, just a question for the Board. If Mr. Outlaw is on his way, would the thought be to swear him in later in the meeting so he would participate in the next meeting? Otherwise, it creates some confusion for the Clerk as to who is here to form the quorum and who's entitled to vote on subsequent issues. It might just be cleaner unless you need that input tonight on some particular issue, just something to reflect on when the moment comes.
And just to add a little bit more to what the Attorney just indicated, Mr. Outlaw's appointment is to fill the unexpired term that exists for Ward Six, and at the first meeting in December, December ninth, I believe, he will be sworn in as the elected representative for Ward Six.
Precisely. Yes, sir.
What was that suggestion, ma'am, yes, sir? To repeat that?
Well, when we have the downtime, the question is going to be, when Mr. Outlaw gets here, is the expectation that he would be sworn in this evening? And if so, when? And I raise the issue because if he's sworn in mid-meeting and is seated, then we've got a question that he was not here at the commencement of the meeting, which is when the roll is called and we establish our quorum. I don't know if we have any matters that are going to create any voting questions thereafter, but I just don't want our record to be confusing if we have a closed vote, and that peculiar procedure creates a question later.
So does the Clerk have the paperwork for him to be sworn in?
I do.
I'll say swear him in when he gets here. No different than if somebody came in late.
What is your recommendation? I'm sorry. What is your recommendation?
Yes, ma'am. Either way, it's fine. I just wanted the Board to think that through. Either way, it's fine with me. I just wanted to raise that issue of when Mr. Outlaw is sworn in.
And are you suggesting, then, that if he's... I'm just asking, if he is sworn in, then he can be seated?
Yes, ma'am, tonight.
Tonight?
Yes, ma'am. That was the issue I was raising. I was asking, what is your expectation? Would he be sworn in and served tonight or sworn in and first be seated at the next meeting? But if he's on his way, he can be sworn in if that was the Board's expectation.
I assume, since we moved the item up, that that was the desire to do it whenever he arrives, but...
I thought that it was, that he was going to be here.
Yes, ma'am.
When the meeting started. That was my expectation.
Perfect.
Just made that clear.
Good.
I think he was assuming that it was going to take place under... if it took place, it was going to take place under appointments, which is at the bottom of the agenda. So he was going to...
Well, if he shows it was everyone's expectation that he would be seated, so we're on the same page.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the table to appoint Elena Huber to the open HPC position that the Mayor has a vacant right now. Is there any further discussion?
Did we... Was I at the point of voting?
We haven't voted yet.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Are there any other appointments?
Yes. I would like to, since I saw the gentleman who's here tonight, appoint to the Planning and Zoning Board, Mr. Mike Duffy. And he is here tonight, and he has sent in his application and everything to City Clerk. Am I correct, City Clerk?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Duffy is now appointed. Anyone else? Okay, move on to item number four, request and petition of citizens. First up is Loretta Armond.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions?
Okay, thank you. Next is David French.
I'm David French at one oh-four Johnson Street. It is over seven very long years since Hurricane Florence hit our beloved New Bern and ENC. Myself, as well as thousands of other ENC folks, are still not back home due to the failure of rebuild NC under Roy Cooper and Josh Stein. In late 2020, before Cousin Mary Ann and I entered the Incor rebuild NC HUD State of New Bern program, which was funded with almost one billion in federal taxpayer HUD dollars, we called and asked if homes in the historic district were okay for the program. They said yes, and that they rebuild NC must adhere to all local, state, and federal guidelines. Since that time through the years of a variety of rebuild onsite home inspections, the preconstruction walkthrough, New Bern Historic Preservation Commission design reviews, and numerous telephone calls and emails, this has been reiterated to them numerous times. On August twenty-first, 2024, the official New Bern HPC hearing was held in this very chamber. The New Bern HPC voted down the house design as expected because the contractor and Incor rebuild NC HUD did not adhere to the guidelines with regard to our home. The contractor said that he would be back in touch with the city of New Bern about how to move forward. He never did, to my knowledge. On November five and six, Luciana's article in the News and Observer about our horrible experience with rent Incor rebuild NC HUD was published online and in print, which led to rebuild NC being exposed, trying to hide an almost quarter of a billion dollar deficit. This only happened because I spoke out against rebuild NC. On November seventh, 2024, the North Carolina Hurricane Recovery Committee requested rebuild NC leader Hogstedt and Gibson to appear before them on November eighteenth. On November eighth, 2024, someone at Incor rebuild NC HUD wrote a letter trying to illegally and fraudulently kick me out of the program, which I did not receive until November twenty-first, 2024. This was sent as retribution and in retaliation against me for going to my elected officials and giving the interview with Luciana. On November eighteenth, Hogstedt and Gibson appeared before the hurricane committee. She was asked to resign, and she refused yet again. On November twentieth, Hogstedt was no longer in charge of Incor rebuild NC HUD. On November twenty-first, I received the November eighth, 2024, letter by email from my rebuild NC case manager, Langston. Rebuild NC said that the New Bern HPC written decision letter dated September eighteenth, 2024, does not offer a path forward for the reconstruction project approval. It is not the responsibility of the New Bern HPC to offer a path forward. However, in the official videotape New Bern HPC hearing, they did indeed offer several paths forward so that the new home could meet the guidelines. Rebuild NC chose not to follow them in violation of local, state, and federal guidelines. On November twenty-second, 2024, and over the next few days and weeks, I responded to Langston's email, copying Incor rebuild NC HUD, Hogstedt, Arland, and other people, asking simple questions about the lever, the letter. They never answered my questions. On February nineteenth, 2025, rebuild NC illegally and fraudulently kicked me out of the program, saying my project is not eligible based on program parameters. Never explained what those parameters were. They stated that reconstruction specifications required of the New Bern Historic District exceed the cost limits. This is untrue because they have spent as much as 700K for at least one rebuilt home, and my home project was way less than that. At this point, they illegally and fraudulently stopped all storage and site payments, which they were obligated to pay, until I am back in my home. I would have never needed one cent of this had they done their job years ago. I appealed, and they have never responded, which they are legally required to do. Incor rebuild NC HUD threw the city of New Bern and the New Bern HPC under the bus and lied about the reason my project was not approved. If this is allowed to stand, it could set a devastating precedent in future disaster recovery efforts if the state of North Carolina is not going to repair homes in historic districts. It must be addressed now, so it is indeed under the purview of the city of New Bern. Listen, I'm about to lose my uninhabitable flooded home, my temporary apartment, and my storage due to the failure of rebuild NC, and my North Carolina elected officials to act responsibly and properly. They do not care. This is important. The Hurricane Florence flood survivors of Craven County have been defrauded by the state of North Carolina under Cooper, Stein, Incor rebuild NC HUD, and their bureaucratic cohorts. We need the city of New Bern and Craven County to band together to represent the interest.
Sir, you know what? It's a good that Cousin Patrick Henry, the pantry, was not on a four-minute timer, or we would still be listening. We would still be bowing to the King of England. This is unconstitutional.
I just got this from someone. This meeting is not being aired on TV three.
Mr. Manager, Alderman Best said she got a message that this meeting is not on CDTV three right now? We'll have the... We'll have staff check it out. Okay. Thank you. Next up?
She says it's playing on the website, so...
Okay.
Her website, but she's checking.
Okay. Next up is Reverend Ethel Sampson.
Praise the Lord. This has been in my possession for sixty-two years. I would remind you of the flag.
Thank you, sir.
Some people call me Old Glory. Others call me Star-Spangled Banner. But whatever you call me, I am your flag, the flag of the United States of America. Something has been bothering me, so I thought I might talk it over with you because it's about you and me. I remember some time ago, people lined up on both sides of the street to watch the parade, and naturally, I was leading every parade proudly, wandering in the breeze. When your dad saw me coming, he immediately removed his hat and placed it against his left shoulder, so that his hand was directly over his heart. Remember? And you, I remember you standing there straight as a soldier. You didn't have a hat, but you were giving the right salute. Remember, little sister? Not to be overdone, she was saluting the same as you, with her right hand over her heart. Remember? What happened? I'm still the same old flag. Oh, I have a few more stars, and since you were a boy, a lot more blood has been shed since these were raised long ago. But now, I don't feel as proud as I used to. When I come down the street, you just stand there with your hands in your pockets, and I may get a cold, low-stiff glance, and you might look away. Then I see the children running around shouting. They don't seem to know who I am. I saw one man take his hat off and looked around. He didn't see anybody else with their off, so he quickly put it back on. It's a sin to be patriotic anymore. Have you forgotten what that stands for? Or take a closer look at the memorial honor... The memorial honor roll sometimes of those who never came back to keep the Republic of America. One nation under God, then you salute me, you are actually saluting them. Well, you'll be long until I come down your street again. So when you see me stand straight, put your right hand over your heart, and I'll salute you by waving back, and I know that you remember. Amen.
Thank you.
Next is Mike Duffy.
All right. Thank you also for filling the vacancy in Ward Six. Now I can go back to signing my emails, New Bern, North Carolina, where everyone comes together, and proud of my new hometown on my Facebook page. Thank you very much. And as far as the appointment, appreciate that, too. You're probably better off with me inside the tent than outside the tent. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Nadine Buchanan.
You are answering my questions, sir.
Okay.
Good evening. Can you all hear me, too? All right. Good evening. Like many citizens in New Bern, I'm glad and grateful that Ward Six will finally have representation in city government. It's truly unfortunate and concerning to me that our neighbors in Ward Six, my neighbors in Ward Six, we've gone fourteen and a half months, four hundred and forty-something days without representation. I went back last week and watched one of the videos, and I watched the guidance that our city attorney gave. I think it was last August, the middle of August, and the advice that he gave was that this should have been taken care of in two months, two months. So here we are. And I just want to say, you know, moving forward, that I believe that delaying the resolution of important problems because of personal preferences is not a good way to lead. It is vital that we have city leaders who work diligently to find compromise and work for consensus in the face of important problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Odom, Alderman, everyone in the building, all the staff. Thank you so much. I came up tonight to actually have a comment about the Ward Six vacancy, but I am definitely happy to see that it's gotten taken care of tonight. But I do want to say this, moving into the future, we have to remember something. Everyone up there took an oath to the United States Constitution, and at the beginning of that Constitution, there's a little something called the preamble, and it goes something like this, "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union." It does not say, "We, the Aldermen of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union." The people have spoken. They voted in the man that they wanted. But the people spoke over a year ago to the same person that was sitting in that seat. Mayor Odom took a lot of flak in this city, saying that his tied vote messed up the works. No, the works got messed up from the Aldermen that decided they wanted somebody else to be in that seat instead of listening to the people of Ward Six, because it's "we, the people," in order to form a more perfect union. I have to trust each one of you, no matter which one of you is the Alderman of my ward, but I have to trust each one of you to help take care of my city. And I expect, when the people cry out and the majority of the people request a particular thing, that you will follow suit because we are your supervisors. We employ you to take that seat, and that's what we need to remember. We, the people of the United States. Mayor Odom, again, took a lot of hit for something he did. He actually went with "we, the people," and somebody up there decided not to. The funny thing is that everybody that was getting put up to try to take the seat didn't follow for the campaign for the election for the seat now. That's pretty strange, isn't it? Thank you.
I have a comment, ma'am.
Sure.
Mr. Keen, you know that I am your Alderman.
I should.
Yes, I know you do. And I think that, you know, you need to have your facts straight and deliver all the facts in reference to the Ward Six vacancy, and you do not have all the facts. And I'm going to just say this, and then I'm not going to say anymore.
I can do the facts that I have.
I'm not going to say anymore after I make this statement. When we could have had this seat, that Ward Six seat filled two months after Bob Brinson left, Alderman Prill requested that we send a flyer out to all the residents of Ward Six. Three members of this board voted no to that flight, to that notification to be mailed to the Ward Six residents. Three Aldermen voted yes. It would only cost the taxpayer $900 to get that information out to the Ward Six residents. This problem would have been resolved at that time. Okay? Thank you so much, sir.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I have?
Sure. Go right ahead, Alderman Royal.
Ms. Helen Robinson, would you come back to the podium, please?
If we're going to call somebody back up, we need to make a motion to suspend the rules and procedures. If the Board wants to deliberate, that's one thing.
So moved.
Second.
A motion, I'm sorry.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Is there further discussion? Hearing none? Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
No.
Alderman Kinsey?
No.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
No.
Alderman Royal, do you have comments you'd like to make?
Yes, sir, I'll deliberate then. If I recall adequately, when we talk about the voice of the people of Ward Six, we received as Alderman almost a 200 signed petition from residents of Ward Six, if I'm remembering correctly, and I believe that I am. And so again, that has to be factored in. If we're saying that what the residents of Ward Six wanted, they were divided in their choice for who would represent them. And so we... I believe this board represented well, I do, because each one of us as Aldermen have a right to listen to the voice of Ward Six citizens or the voice of all of our citizens, no matter what the ward is. And there was a division there. There was not a, per se, majority who wanted one particular person to represent the ward. They were divided in their decision. So we have on record this petition from citizens who did not, who chose a different path for representation, and I just wanted to make that statement also.
Is that all, ma'am?
That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Next up is the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the Board on items five through fourteen? Make a question. Go ahead.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none? Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Next up is item number fifteen, presentation by Wreaths Across America. I believe Mr. Kevin Yates is going to come make his annual presentation. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Alderman. As you are very aware, my name is Kevin Yates. I am the volunteer Wreaths Across America location coordinator at the New Bern National Cemetery. And again, on December thirteenth of this year, we will be hosting the National Wreaths Across America Day at the National Cemetery at Cedar Grove at Evergreen and Greenwood Cemeteries. Those festivities will kick off at twelve o'clock. This year, we'll have over 4,000 cemeteries participating across the entire country, and like I mentioned, we now have four here in the city of New Bern that will be participating to recognize the many veterans that are interred here in the city. This is our sixteenth year to participate. We have 6,775 headstones at the National Cemetery. It was built in February first, eighteen sixty-seven. We have over a thousand unknowns that are buried there in several mass graves. As you know, the cemetery was created on the bivouac site of the Massachusetts Army following the Battle of New Bern, and many of the soldiers that are interred there were located after the war and the cemetery was created. Every wreath has to be sponsored. They're seventeen dollars. That delivers a live balsam wreath to New Bern. The challenges that we face as a program is the age of the cemetery. Obviously, many of our military members are stationed at Cherry Point, Camp Lejeune, and Seymour Johnson, and then after their military time, they... And then after their military time, they some stay, some leave. The many transplants that we have that decide that New Bern is a great place to live, like myself, my wife and I, my children have been here for twenty years, because New Bern is such a great place to live. Our other one is the unknowns that I previously mentioned. We have over a thousand soldiers that are buried there that do not have someone to make sure that they receive a wreath each year. And then in additional, with the cancellation of Mumfest this year, that's not just for many of the small businesses locally, but also many of our national, or our nonprofits. Mumfest is a huge fundraiser for us, and so it just adds another challenge that we'll be facing this year. For those that have not been able to come and attend the festivities, it's a great opportunity to come out. We get folks from all sorts of backgrounds that come out and honor our veterans that are interred there. Like I mentioned, over the last couple of years, Mayor Odom made a challenge to represent and honor every veteran in the city of New Bern with a wreath, and we've added three more cemeteries to that. Like I said, Cedar Grove, Evergreen, and Greenwood are now participating in the program. But there's so much more to it than just wreaths. I get asked that all the time, you know, what's the big deal about putting a wreath out on a headstone? It's so much more than that. Our motto is remember, honor, and teach, and a big part of that is teaching the next generation. We also added a wreath escort in 2017, and we have a law enforcement, the fire department, and local motorcycle riders go out and meet the trucks that are coming in to New Bern to deliver those wreaths. I told the story recently about in 2017 Coca-Cola delivered the wreaths to New Bern, and Pepsi found out, and every year since Pepsi has delivered the wreaths. They donate the truck, they donate the drivers, they go get the wreaths and deliver them to New Bern. The fire department sets up the flag over Broad Street, and we bring the wreaths down to receive the proper recognition as they're coming into town. We invite folks to come out and stand along Broad Street. We get a lot of folks to stand out in a wrong, along Dairy Queen, and there at Broad, and along the whole drive there as they're coming down, and then at local businesses along the way. Two years ago, or 2024, actually, we actually hosted the Wreaths Across America Mobile Education Exhibit. It's a traveling exhibit that goes all over the country to educate folks about the program, and we hosted that at Lawson Creek Park. And this is a few pictures of it being, of coming in. It was a semi tractor trailer truck that was brought into town, set up, and it was hosted for three or four days at Lawson Creek. The ceremony, again, last year, we hosted over a thousand people that come out and help us place wreaths on all the headstones there at the National Cemetery, and then following, we headed over to Cedar Grove and Evergreen and Greenwood. We had all types of folks that come out, active duty military, many veterans. Even during COVID, we still went out and honored our veterans. Again, more pictures. And it's incredible how a wreath and a bow placed out there, it really adds just an incredible pop of color and a feeling of, sense of pride to many families that have their loved ones interred there. And then we have to retire the wreaths. So in January, we have volunteers again come out, and we clean up and retire the wreaths and return the cemetery back like we were never even there. And so as soon as the wreaths are retired and removed, then the cemetery again is reset, and we start all over again and start our fundraising efforts to place wreaths again for the following year. Again, this is a great opportunity, families, youth groups, we have all types of organizations, scouts, young Marines, church activity groups that come out and participate in the program. We have students that are in the National Honor Society and avid programs that need volunteer hours, and they come out and we help them with that as well. So why am I here tonight, again, is to bring awareness. On December eleventh, we'll be escorting the wreaths into town, and we would like our law enforcement and fire department to be aware of that. And then obviously, in eighteen sixty-seven, parking was not a big concern, and so at the cemetery, we have very little parking, and when we have a thousand volunteers that come out to help us, it becomes a problem with where we're going to park all those cars. So for the last several years, we've been parking at what used to be Roos Chapel at Semen Street in Oaks, and then we need buses to help us transport the volunteers from Roos Chapel down to the cemetery and back. And then also, we need dumpsters to help us when it comes time to remove the wreaths. So again, if you haven't been able to come out and participate, I would invite you, everyone, to come out and participate. It'll be Saturday, December thirteenth, at twelve o'clock noon. That should say 2025, not 2024, but the date is correct, December thirteenth. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Hughes, do you need any direction from the board on the request?
If you'd like to give direction, again, as he has said, we have participated with this program for many years and have to continue doing that if the board so chooses.
The board would like to give direction on the request that was made. Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Let me ask you a question. How much money do you typically raise at Mumfest? And what is that? Is that money for the wreaths?
Correct. So in years past, it's been about six or seven hundred dollars that we typically would raise at Mumfest, and that's, we usually put a bucket out and we just ask for folks that are walking by to make donations.
Is that for wreaths that were placed locally?
Correct, absolutely, and all that money was.
So is that gonna, is, are you gonna have enough money to buy enough wreaths this year to?
We hope so. So this is our sixteenth year. We've covered the cemetery three years out of the sixteen. So it's very humble beginnings in the, in the early on, we would place a few dozen wreaths, and then over the years, we've placed it. So 2018, the year of Florence, was the first year that we covered the cemetery, and then in 2023, 2024, we covered the cemetery. So again, that would be our goal, and we've covered Greenwood, Evergreen, and Cedar Grove each of the years that they've participated.
Mayor, I'm not sure if it's appropriate to do it now or not, but I would like to ask the board that if I could give a thousand dollars, my ARP money, to the Wreaths Across America, is that what it's called?
Yes, sir.
Wreaths Across America for the purchase wreaths for the local cemeteries, our, that to the local cemeteries. And does that qualify, Kim?
Yes.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Maybe that will help you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay. Next up is item number sixteen, Consider Adoption Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Preliminary Engineering Agreement with NC Department of Transportation for Element Three Nine Zero Zero Four, Program Number U Three Four Three One, Miller Boulevard, Mr. Bouchard. Charlie, before you get started, Mr. Attorney, Alderman Outlaw is here. Can we administer the oath to him?
Yes, sir, that'd be fine. I want you to entertain a motion to.
Okay, can we entertain a motion to administer the oath to Alderman Outlaw?
May I like to make a motion that we administer the oath to Mr. Outlaw for the remainder term of Senator Brinson.
Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Mr. Outlaw, you come forward, sir.
Do you, Dana E. Outlaw solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, so help you God? Do you, Dana E. Outlaw solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as alderman, so help you God? Do you, Dana E. Outlaw solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance, blood allegiance, to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and abilities, so help you God? Congratulations.
Okay, Alderman Outlaw, would you like to make any comments, sir?
I just want to thank the New Bern alderman for the job he's done for the last couple of years. I've watched for digging out of it for a little while, and I think you guys did a great job.
Put your mic down, pal. All right. Thank you, sir. Sorry, Charlie, back to you, number sixteen. As a reminder, this is to Consider Adoption Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Preliminary Engineering Agreement with North Carolina Department of Transportation for Element Three Nine Zero Zero Nine, Program Number U Three Four Three One, Miller Boulevard.
Good evening, Mayor Odom, Board of Aldermen. Tonight, I'm proposing an agreement, such as you said, between the city of New Bern and the North Carolina Department of Transportation. This agreement allows the city to be reimbursed for engineering expenses associated with relocating a portion of the electric distribution system. The relocation involves an area of approximately three quarters of a mile long, and it conflicts with NC DOT's Miller Boulevard project out in the Havelock area. The estimated cost for engineering is a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, and a hundred and sixty-six, five hundred and forty-eight dollars is the estimate on that. As we work through the engineering and design, we'll be able to better estimate the construction costs, so I'd expect I'd come back to you at a later time with another agreement to get reimbursed on the construction activities as NC DOT moves forward with the project. And I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Board have questions? Charlie, I have a question. When this engineering is done, will be, will we be reimbursed for the construction cost?
Engineering is different than construction.
Right, but will we be reimbursed for the construction costs once the engineering is complete and the project starts?
Correct. We will have to sign another agreement for the construction cost.
Okay.
So I'll be back again with, once we get that estimate done.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mayor, if there's no questions, I'd like to make a motion.
Sure.
To adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute, execute a preliminary engineering agreement with the NC Department of Transportation for Element Three Nine Zero Zero Four, Program Number U Three Four Three One, Miller Boulevard. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Kinsey.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Next up is item number seventeen, Consider Adoption Resolution Approving the Sale of Four Zero Eight Sutton's Alley. Mr. Hughes.
In October of 2024, BCJ Development LLC tendered a bid in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars for the purchase of this property. The bid was advertised, and numerous upset bids were received. The final bid is nine thousand five hundred dollars. If the property is sold for this bid, the city will receive five thousand one hundred thirty-one dollars fifty-two cents, and the county will receive four thousand three hundred sixty-eight dollars forty-eight cents. The parcel is a vacant point oh-three acre commercial tract with a tax value of three thousand dollars. It was acquired by the city and county in July of 2013 through tax foreclosure. Happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Board have questions?
Mayor, hearing no further discussion or comments, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the sale of Four Zero Eight Sutton's Alley.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion on item number seventeen? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Best.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Next is item number eighteen, Consider Adoption Resolution Approving a Contract with Axon and Authorizing the Execution of the Same Chief Gallagher.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, board members. The New Bern Police Department is on the eve of renewing its contract with Axon Enterprise Inc. for another five years. For those of you that don't know, but Axon is our body worn camera vendor. I have provided an outline drafted with the help of our finance department to explain the price increase compared to the original amount of the contract of 2021. The New Bern Police Department continues to strive to meet the highest standards in how we engage our community. Body worn cameras, in-car cameras, interview room cameras, and less lethal tasers have proven to be the best in the industry with respect to Axon. Axon's superiority stems from its integrated capacity encompassing hardware, software, cloud storage, and related auditing and internal functionality. The pricing for Axon body cameras, in-car cameras, and our less lethal tasers has seen an increase of approximately twelve percent each year over the preceding four years. Regarding the evaluation of other vendors that offer body worn camera technology, we, like many different agencies, have done our due diligence, and we have done research. And we, like other agencies, have opted to remain with Axon. No other vendor has demonstrated the same level of service and reliability as Axon. The New Bern Police Department has researched other vendors such as Digital Ally, Utility, and Motorola. Our in-house research did not find that these vendors to be suitable for our needs. Axon stands out as the fastest growing provider in the industry. It is currently the only evidence management platform used by our district attorney's office. Based on our analysis, Axon delivers the most future-proof, field-tested, and comprehensive platform available today. We ask for your support in providing our ability to sign a new five-year contract with Axon. And I'm available if, for any questions, if you have them.
Board have questions?
So now, what you're saying, chief, if we go ahead and purchase them now, we actually save money?
Yes. If we sign this contract and have it authorized before the end of October, we will save an additional fifteen percent, because Axon has indicated they are, they are holding the additional fifteen percent increase based on our desire to have that contract signed tonight.
So I might make the motion that we go ahead and sign that contract tonight.
So we have a motion to approve on item number eighteen.
Second.
Have a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Outlaw.
Alderman Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Number 19, the Resiliency and Hazard Mitigation Plan Grant Project Fund is amended to recognize a grant from North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, Resilient Coastal Communities Program in the amount of $367,500. The funds will be used for the Duffy Field Canal restoration master plan project. For item number 20, the multi-year grant fund, grants fund is amended to acknowledge a $5,601 grant from the New Bern Police Department Volunteer Group. The funding awarded is through the Bates Foundation Grant, and it will assist with the purchase of underwater drone equipment. There's no match required for that. And for item number 21, we have the general fund is amended to recognize donations and the respective expenses in the amount of $2,689.71 for the police department, from the police department volunteer group for evidence, storage containers. And for Parks and Recreation, in the amount of $6,000 from the Berry Mary Events for holiday event expenses, and an amount of $5,000 from the Craven County Independent Insurance Agents Association for the purchase of two snow machines.
Is Board have questions?
If there's no questions by the Board, I would motion to adopt an ordinance amending the Resiliency and Hazard Mitigation Plan Grant Project Fund, and adopt an ordinance amending the multi-year grants fund, and adopt a budget ordinance amendment for physical year 2026.
Second?
Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Pril.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Outlaw?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Next up is Attorney's Report.
I'm Mr. Porch, and I'm Mayor.
City Manager's Report.
Earlier today, the Board of Elections did certify the election results. Congratulations to Ray Ferguson, Sharon Bryant, Bobby Astor, Barbara Best, and Dana Outlaw. A runoff election will be held for Mayor between Jeffrey Odom and Holly Raby, and for the Ward Four Alderman position between Johnny Ray Kinsey and Laney White. In my conversations with the Director of the Board of Elections, ballots are currently being printed. The Board of Elections will announce when early voting begins, and of course, early voting will again be held at the Stanley White Recreation Center. As a reminder, Election Day will be Tuesday, November 4th for that. Also, really excited that all three general obligation bond referendums passed, streets and sidewalks passed by 69.6%, Parks and Recreation 65.7%, and stormwater by 75.6%. We'll have more information to come on this at the November 12th meeting when the Board does accept those results, and then we start moving forward with this process. Also, want to remind you of a few upcoming events. Halloween events will be starting up on Saturday, October 25th with trick-or-treating with downtown merchants from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Then things will shift over to Union Point Park for the Witch's Ride at 5:00 p.m., additional trick-or-treating at Union Point Park from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m., a costume contest at 6:00 p.m., and a Halloween movie featuring Wicked at 6:30 p.m. That's all we have tonight, sir.
All right. New business for Alderman Pril?
Nothing tonight, really.
Alderman Royal?
Yes, Mayor. I would like to allocate $1,334.34 of my remaining oppa fund to use at the, excuse me, Henderson Park for to continue the building of the restrooms and the concession stand. I would like to make that as a motion, rather.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Anything else?
Yes, sir. I would certainly like to commend Mr. Foster Hughes for the excellent job that he does as City Manager. He is accessible. He operates very timely. I appreciate that. I want to say it publicly, I've said it to you countless times, but I wanted to say that publicly, I appreciate the things that you do working with the Board of Aldermen. And again, your expertise, I appreciate it. And then the final thing, Mayor, if you would. Since our citizens are our supervisors, I would certainly welcome all citizens to approach any and all members of the Board of Aldermen so that our citizens will have all the facts and not just subjective opinions. And I would certainly appreciate it anytime that perhaps you might have a thought as a citizen or some conflicting information that you have heard, please feel free to approach the Board of Aldermen. Every voice has value. We listen to each one, we take into consideration the things that our citizens share with us, and I welcome the opportunity for all of our citizens to approach the Board of Aldermen. Any member, I believe I can speak that for all of us tonight, that we have a listening ear, and then all of our facts can be straight, and then we can have that cohesion as a community. I welcome that. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Astor?
Yes, Mayor. I'd too, well, I would like to thank city staff, Public Works, Electric Department, Fire Department, and all city workers for the hard work during this past weekend during the storm. I know that Public Works and Park and Recreation jumped on to clean up right away and got the city looking back good again. I just wanted to thank them. While many of us were home during the wind and the rain, some of our workers were out working, and that's what makes a good city employee. And I, Foster, if you would, just pass on that I appreciate everything you do. Also, Foster, a couple of meetings ago, I asked about the small homes and whether or not they were occupied. Do you know if they are occupied at this time or not?
They are currently not occupied at this time, and I know that there have been some discussions between Twin Rivers and the Housing Authority, and I think they're trying to make some forward progress right now, so that's the most recent information I've received.
Well, I had requested at one time that the, that the Twin Rivers Board come before us and explained to us the reason why it takes two years to fill three nice vacant homes. Is there any way that they ever respond to you?
So what I will tell you is that the Executive Director of the Housing Authority asked us to hold off for that while they work internally to try to get some things squared away with Twin Rivers, and so we have honored their request on that. According to, according to the Executive Director, they're close to getting the vouchers that they are needing for that.
Okay. Well, again, I'm gonna say shame on Twin Rivers. You got three nice little houses over there that people need, and they're dragging their feet and trying to get somebody in. And I still think that they should come before us and explain the reason why that it takes so long to get a voucher. Regularly can't make them come up here, but I'm certainly disappointed in them. Thank you, that's all I have, man.
Okay. Alderman Kinsey?
Foster, I would like to thank you again for making sure that those covets was cleaned out, the grass was cut down during the flow of the water that was really coming through to bring the high tides into the city, and that the fourth ward didn't suffer any damage due to the response of Public Works. Because as you know, on Colony Drive, that is the main thoroughfare for the water to flow through, and that's where we get in trouble at. And I would say thank you that we didn't have any catastrophic, anything to go wrong. Thank you so very much for that. Dana only helped me to do that, but now he's back, I can put it to work.
Is that all?
That's it, sir.
Alderman Best?
Yes, I definitely want to thank Public Works for their work. I just want the citizens to know that I was given information by the Public Works Department that this last weekend, that this, all the water that came down here in the city, that with all the projects and the construction and everything that's going on over on the East Road Street at Duffy Field, all of that area there, it held back two feet of water from coming into the community. So I am so happy about that, and there's a lot more work that needs to be done with the Duffy Field Canal project, which is, which Mr. Childs and his staff and Avery Smith are working diligently, and I just want to thank them, and that's all I have, sir.
Okay. Alderman Outlaw?
I would like to thank my family for their support in, you know, my previous times on the Board and the present, Jenna, and my granddaughter, Keely, who helped Bible for me, and Greg Riggs, and my brothers, my brothers and my sister. And so, you know, when you're doing this job, sometimes there are some pretty tough decisions that have to be made. It's always good that your family is back home supporting you. And again, look forward to working with the Board.
Okay. The only thing I'd like to say is regarding Mumfest, obviously, it was an unfortunate situation with the weather condition the way it was. It was a tough call by Swiss Bear to make that. I did reach out to the current Chairman of the Swiss Bear Board today and talked about some potential alternatives, threw out a couple of ideas. I think they have a meeting on Thursday. They're gonna discuss some things as well, but it would be great if we could somehow do something to help bring some folks downtown to help out with our merchants before the holiday season. People come down for the holiday season regardless, but to do something before, and maybe even like Mr. Gates that was here that had the nonprofit booth for Reach Across America, we could offer that to them as well. So more to come on that. Do we need a closed session?
No, sir.
And if not, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So. Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.